What? Is there something there?
Yeah, there is.
Don't touch it.
As I hear different from other elected officials and department heads, I think we could begin to go back to some semblance of what we were doing as far as public availability. I'm still a strong proponent of fact that I think that individuals need to make that decision on whether they want to come in or not, or continue to converse or whatever with various office offices during, you know, either by phone or mail. At some point, we got to get back to normal. I would think we ought to be able to do it. Maybe, you know, the first step would be go back just to have the east entrance open. That's my thought. I know we were looking into some plexiglass shields for the auditors department as maybe a sample. Did we not get those?
We, they were three to five days out when we ordered them, so we should receive. We ordered one just to make sure that they were going to work for us, and we should receive that, I would think, by Tuesday or Wednesday of this week on the one, but then the rest of them could be another five, six days from that. So, and that is one thing we said we would provide prior to opening for those shields. So, and we were looking into them for that reason. But it's not only the auditors, the treasurer, it's the assessor's office, it's recorder's office. We've got 20 of them coming, so.
Twenty?
Yeah.
Well, with the cone setup, the way they have a little plastic chain, I think you've got that separation between the individual and the counter that I'm assuming you could still do business. Looking for something out there, somebody. Michelle, you'll have to come up and.
Michelle Ann Graves, Johnson County Treasurer. Hello, everyone. I agree with Mr. West, you know, at some point, we do need to get back to business as usual. I don't think we're there quite yet. I know my staff is anxious to take payments as quickly and as vastly and expediently as we can. But I do think we should defer until those shields come in, just for cases of the sick people that are going to come in the building regardless, or the people that are contagious and don't realize they are. Coughs and sneezes, we would have no protection, no way to protect the staff from that. And I think those shields would go a long way to keeping the staff safe. So I would like that we, I would like to see that we defer until some more safety measures are in place for the staff. And again, you know, look at, you know, how many people we're letting in the building, how closely monitor, how closely they stand together. I don't know whose responsibility that would fall under. But during normal collection seasons, you know, we see upwards of 200 people a day. I would like to at least wait until the shields are available.
And when did you think they would be available?
We, we should have, we originally ordered one to try to, to make sure that they were going to work because they're very hard to get. I don't think there's going to be an issue from what I've seen of what got ordered. But they said three to five days, but in today's world, you're probably looking at 10 days. So I would say probably we're going to see the bulk of those come in by the, probably the end of this week. I would think some of those will be in, I hope that it could be as much as Wednesday or next week. So I think, I think at this point in time, because, you know, I did take seriously the email I got that we should try to provide those. But I think we should probably look at the May 1st date that the state is going with at this time. And then if they don't come by then, then I think we have to look at the order if the state's going by that time. It's kind of just, what I don't want to do is told them I would go to work on that and get done, and I did. But I need to kind of say, rename on that, I guess. For a poker term.
I'm not, I'm not fully convinced that those shields are all that effective personally, but because you hear just a myriad of stories or facts, supposedly facts, on the transformation of it, anywhere from three to five feet, 20 feet, the cough can go 40 feet. I really don't know, I mean, I really don't know how effective they are. I think if you maintain that separation that you have between the cones and the chain and the counter. Again, you know, I guess I'm putting a lot of faith in the individual if they, if they're coughing and sneezing or they have a cold or whatever. They, they might going to be out and about.
And I think that's, that's part of the concern is that the individuals coming to the counters. I know Pam has seen it at her side. They're not always respectful of the cones. They're not always respectful of the chains. And I think that, that clear plexiglass will do wonders for stopping the droplets that we hear about so much on the news, you know, as for passing the virus. And then I also think it will do mountains of good for morale in the building, that people can come here every day and feel comfortable that the county's doing everything they can to keep them safe while still serving taxpayers.
And in my discussion of looking at the, the plexiglass on my, my intent was, it's not only for what we're dealing with now. It's for the flu season, it's for colds, it's for anything that comes into the building. You know, they're temporary, they can be moved, easily cleaned, and then they could be used for seasons. And then, you know, when summer, when those things aren't around so much, you can take them down if you wanted to. And that would be the choice of the elected officials in those departments. So that was kind of my intent. And it wasn't really all for this, you know, we have more of a problem with influenza B in this state than anything else. So that was my intent more for that, for the safety, not only in public, but for us, because we can be carrying that flu too and put on to other people. So that was kind of my intent.
How do you handle and treat them out? Like, they make an appointment, they want to come in, how do you handle it?
Well, actually, in our office, everything, all of our functions can be done now online through the mail, over the phone, or in our Dropbox. The only exception being the mobile home permits where we need to see the original title. And we're just scheduling an appointment and meeting them at the front door with masks and gloves on, bringing it back to the office, finishing up the transaction and returning it to the front door. And we've had less than a half dozen since we started this.
Mark, you did. I, I've met some people outside, yeah. They, most of the traffic we have right now.
Who are you?
Mark Alexander, county assessor. And most of the traffic we have is reserved for, they came in to pay the taxes, they came in to file an exemption application. They're not coming in to CS, they call first. My plan B is, you know, I was planning on, I watched the governor today, was probably having March, when they birth. But even then, I'd like to have that south door to our floor where they can't come in. Because I want control. Everybody that comes to our office, in normal times, I'd invite them back, we'd have a meeting face to face. But I'm not, I'm not going to offer that until this is passed. It'd be obvious. And I, I know people respect, I, there's, there's some people that I would let in because I know them well enough that they would respect that, stay six feet away. But I don't, I'm not a doctor, I don't know about the six foot, I don't, it might be 16 feet, I don't, I don't know. I do know that my front line in our office, half the people in our staff is, I'm, I'm median age, I'm 64. So we're in that group that could be susceptible, or half the people are. I think that it's being well received, people I've talked to on the phone, they appreciate, we've done this for years, the callback, use the email, electronic transfer of data. So that seems to be the, the way we're doing business now, and I, I expect that to continue. Face to face is just, really just to have a personalized, you know, meeting with the appraiser. And I like that. And it, it isn't, it's not a luxury, I would like to go back to that, and we will. But I think that, you know, I, I came down to both these meetings, and I thought, well, if you asked, I would prefer that we keep the building closed as long as the governor's reprimanded and, and when it does open, limit the access as far as the public coming in. You know, on our floor, we just have a recorder in our office. So I may shield our staff and set up a table when they pass, pass the recorder's office, put up those shields, interview them, get their email address, their phone number, introduce myself, and then tell them, I'll call you back today. You know, it's, it's, it's a, we, we've done that for years, and we try to call people back that same day. So it doesn't matter, if they came in, I would like to greet them. But I, I, like Michelle said, people don't like taxes, not all, but I mean, and then when they come down here and they take the time to load up and come down, they don't want to be turned away. So I want to, if they do get in the building, or if they're, if they're outside and they want to drop off something, I want to service it with that currency though. But everything we do is electronic now. It's not necessarily like it used to be.
Yeah. I guess part of, part of my thinking that we were back, could get back to some semblance of, one would say is if you just apply a practical approach to where we're at today and where we've been at here in the recent past, like the last month as an example. If you go to Menards, or you go to Kroger, Costco, and go to a lot of those retail establishments that have personnel, cashiers especially, who are in that kind of face to face situation, and some of them have put up shields, but by and large, most of them don't have. And to date, I haven't heard of any of those businesses suffering a major affliction of contamination of their employees. And they're, they've got hundreds of people a day going through those facilities. So it, to me, I'm just trying to look at it in a logical fashion. And you have to, you have to take what you can visibly see and understand as a condition of where we're at and where we maybe should be or could be. And so that's kind of my thinking. I don't think that if there was a huge problem in contamination, person to person, I would think that those facilities would just be riffed with it. And they would, they wouldn't have enough employees to keep their facility open. So I'm not so sure that what we're worried about here is really what we need to be worried about, maybe.
Well, Mark, with HIPAA, I'm not so sure that we would, we would have that information. You know, I don't, I don't know that it would be put out where you or I would have access to who's gone in to test. I know my personal experience, if a person goes in and gets a test, they have to stay away for, until the test results come back. And in our case, it took a week. So it was not instant. And that week puts everybody that's been around that person, you know, they're, they're, they have anxiety because they don't know if they've been exposed to somebody that, you know, tested positive. So that's, that's the way I look at it. And we've got a job to do. Our office, the auditor, treasurer, and recorder are all connected. If one of us goes down, that interrupts the whole process. And everything we do in our department is time sensitive. So if we don't get done with the sales disclosures, we can't do the sales ratio analysis, we can't set market adjustments, we can't certify the assessment, we can't roll it to the auditor. That's July 1st deadline, so we're on it. But if I shut down, it could have just, it could have happened. You know, if I, if I have to quarantine half my staff, then what are we going to do? It's not worth the risk, the risk reward. We, we're not a business, but we sent out a piece of paper, 60,000 of them. And for some reason, people send us money. And that's our product. So it's not something that we, we want to interrupt.
That sounds like the IRS.
It's not like the IRS because you get to participate, and that's what we're talking about. So it is a, you know, I'm glad we're not like the IRS, so.
Thank you, you know, appreciate that. And as far as the south entrance, though, Mark, forward on that subject, I don't know at this point if the south entrance will ever be opened back up. There should probably be more for employee entrance. And we've got some work we've got to do on that, or even thinking about that anyway. So at this point in time, until we get that redone on that end, we're probably not going to be able to open that back up anyway. It's, it's just, it's going to be for employees.
The treasurer's office likes that suggestion as well because it, it funnels all the traffic coming in from one central point. And I think that's a security issue, and that is, we well addressed that, absolutely.
Well, and that, that south entrance is, is a little dangerous sometimes.
At best.
And we've had a couple of people fall there that we just don't really want to repeat.
And if it helps you, any Commissioner West, something that makes this, the county offices different than, say, a Kroger, Menards, or a, a large Home Depot store, is they have several layers of staff they can go back to if someone gets sick, got their quarantine for five days, 10 days, 14 days. We're a little different here in that, yes, we employ hundreds of people at the county level. However, individual offices may have five, 15, 12, six, and there's just not enough resources to go to should have that staff get wiped out. And I, I think that's why we should defer opening the building until we get some more security measures in place for both the public.
Olivia, Olivia.
I, I wouldn't try to compare you to a retail establishment, I was just trying to make.
Two are cute ones.
They have an awful lot of exposure.
Yep, Beth is going to talk here in a minute.
Tricia, Pedro, county recorder. I'm on my way to a birthday parade, so, yeah. I agree with the treasurer, the assessor. We have people that come in, we make appointments, and we basically have a couple of title searchers that come in, they, they, they're here all the time. Just to, for instance, we had a surveyor that came in Friday. He made an appointment, I allow the staff to make appointments if I'm not here, I was on the lunch. And they questioned him, did all the questions. It so happened, he was looking at Princess Lakes flats, which are a mess. We have a sign on the door that leads into the office where the staff is, sign on it, please use the other door, you have business, stay on the inside counter. I came back, he was back there, I heard him talking really close, I got up, he was standing over one of the girl's shoulders, and she just turned around like, and I just said, sir, do you read the sign on the door? He said, well, yeah, but I've been in here before. I said, no, that's, that's for your safety and hours. And, and I had to tell him, you, you need to go in the room and stay on the side of the yellow chain. And he said, oh, I get it, I'm home with my kids. I said, then you need to sit down like right now. And they, people just don't read the signs. And, and I was going to say what Michelle said, we're very low members here. If one of my staff gets, we can handle 99.5% of our business online and email. We're all busy because we're spending more time on the phone, we're spending more time faxing stuff, emailing stuff, doing a little more searching than we normally do. I have one staff member working from home. So if one of our staff gets sick or they're not here, it's, it's going to, it could be hard. Interest rates are so low right now. Last month, I wrote at the auditor a check for $112,000, that's the biggest check I've written in 15 minutes. So we're, we're essential, we're helping people, it's working. And I would just like to see us at least follow the governors, you know, and then do it slowly, you know, back into it slowly. I, I think it's working good. We're, I know at CVS and places, they put the table in front of the register, and you're like, what does that do? It keeps people from leaning on that surface. And we don't know who the carriers are, one of us could be. One person in here, in the staff, could get infected and hit the building down, and then what, what's the county going to do? We're bringing in a lot less money anyway, so anything less is going to, is going to impact it, so, thank you.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. I just wanted to make up a couple of brief comments, or more, one's more of a kind of request, and the second one is just kind of an update. For the first time that I believe in Johnson County history, we had to quarantine a, a couple with the COVID-19 virus because they were refusing to stay at home and were going to go back to work at Kroger. So just, because that's kind of food for thought. And second of all, if you would reopen the buildings, I would strongly encourage you to shut the bathrooms down for public use. Note, that's my only comment.
I think it would be hard to open up the buildings and shut the restrooms down.
Thank you. Thanks, Beth. You know, hearing what all of you have said to this point, I think going forward, we, we may have established a new way of doing business. Because one of the things, and I think I said this in our last meeting, I haven't heard general public complaining yet on not being able to access government services through those various offices. So apparently what we're doing is working. So maybe that's going to be the trend going forward.
I, I think it really is going to be the trend regardless because technology's gotten so far advanced to what it used to be. My Commissioner Wallace?
I mean, I've been since day one, I think we should follow the governor's lead on this. Explain it like a colonel's trying to outdo the general. I really think we should follow state guidelines on this. I think it's just going to create more confusion with people if we don't follow state guidelines and open up premature. Something happens, we've got some problems. The only thing I would like to do is align with the May 1st date, or May 4th would be an opening date, would be that Monday, unless something changes in that time period. I mean, it's going to give Commissioner West time to get some safety measures put in place. It's time for us to meet, and if we do open, I would like it gradually opened up. I don't think we just need to open the doors and have 500 people in here on day one. If we go to a restriction on how many people can be in the building, I, I just think we need to look at a lot of different options to protect the employees here. You know, they've got a point, you know, brought this up before, if they, if one person goes down, we've got some problems. I know there's other people that can back those services up, but we're not set up for it right now. So, I mean, that would be my recommendation at this time.
Only problem I've got there, if you go back a month, what would they say, give us two weeks to flatten the current? Well, two weeks came and went, we need another two weeks. And then it's going to peak next week, so we need more time. And eventually, we've got to get back to normal. I'm not necessarily talking about government services now, I'm talking about in general. My contention is that, that elected officials are going to have to answer for the things that they've put in place during this period of time, and how effective those things really were, or how detrimental they were. So they're going to have to answer for that. Well, in order to preserve any kind of safety on their part as to the actions they took, they need to continue to extend this on and on, because the longer they can extend it, the more they're going to have as an argument coming back that, well, what we did, you can see the effects of it over this long period of time. So I think in part, it's kind of the CYA on their part, and especially when they began to talk about, we're going to work collectively with other states. Well, again, it's not, they, they don't want to take personal responsibility for opening that, the, things back up to the general population. They want to do it, you know, let's get together and then we can share the responsibility, share the blame, or share whatever the consequence might be. I, I'd like to see our governor think independently, move towards opening things back up. We're not New York, I just heard a report today that out of the 25 areas in the country that have the most COVID cases and deaths, one of them is way up here, and that's New York, and the other 24 are way down here. So we're not New York. I don't, I don't think we're, we're feeling the effects nearly that, that New York is having, and I don't think we're subjecting ourselves to that. So my point is, you're going to get to May 1st, May 4th, pick a date, and then they're going to say we need another, let's go to June 1st. How long can you go on at this rate? How much longer are we going to suffer the consequences economically and personally of being cooped up like this, not being able to do anything? I mean, we're to the point of ridiculous now, and again, I've got some, some things here I was just going to cover, as how ridiculous these elected officials have become, and how authoritarian they've become in the process of using their power. Hopefully, by the end of the general assembly, and then some of these other legislative bodies going forward, are going to rein in some of these powers that these governors and mayors have currently available to them and available to them. So two weeks from now, there's, there're going to be, there's going to be more COVID cases out there, more people are going to be tested positive, more people are going to die as a result of it. So are we still going to say, well, let's hunker down, stay home, buddy? Are we going to come to the realization that we as a society can deal with it? The human body can build up the antibody, because you're going to get subject to it at some point in time. If I took the example of what, what Michelle and, and Mark and Tricia are saying, is trying to preserve that small group of workers that they have and keep them safe in order to be able to effectively run their offices, then maybe what we ought to say, well, listen, all your people are going to be quarantined when they're not at work, they got to go straight home and never leave because we're in fear of jeopardizing the effectiveness of your office. Well, hell, they're not going to go home and hunker down day in and day out, never leave the house, they're still going to go out and shop, they're going to go to the grocery store, they're going to associate with friends and relatives when they can. I guess what I'm saying is that we're to a point in society today, we're, we're at a point of ridiculousness in how we're dealing with this thing. And two weeks from now, nothing's going to change. You're still going to be subject to it regardless of whether you think you're not. You're still going to be subject to it at some point. And like I've said before, and experts will say, at some point, we're probably all going to get it. Now hopefully, down the road, there'll be vaccines, of course, or suns, or ways to treat the effects of it, the less and the consequences of it. But that might be a year out, where we sure can't hunker down for another year. Would you guys want to do that for another year? I don't think so. So we got a, we got a man. So we gotta, we, we got a man up here. Decided it's time to try to get back to normal and all I'm saying is, I, I'm not asking you to open up and, and I don't think you're gonna have five hundred people. I'm gonna bet, I'll bet you if we said we're open back normal tomorrow, you wouldn't have five people here. And by next week, you probably wouldn't have.
I'll take the bet. I'll take the bet, how much? There's people that, there's people that wanna come in. Well, I don't wanna argue.
No, no, I, I appreciate what you're saying.
Yeah, I was just kidding. I, I mean, you, you put a bet out there, I just, I took it. There are people that wanna come into our building.
So there, so we are.
And I talk, and I talk them out of it because the building's closed. Now, you know, you, you, you prefaced everything you just said as, I'm not talking about government, our, our building, so. But it's kinda, then at the end, you talk about our building. So you can't have both ways. I mean, either talking about elected officials having control over, you know, I'm just a manager. I manage a product. It takes labor to do that. So, you know, I agree with Kevin. The governor is putting out a request, so to speak, because he's given it up to you, whether you're gonna follow or not. That's the only reason I'm here today is I wanted to answer any questions you had about my thought process. Half of, not half, but I got six people that are using laptops and they're not in the building. And I don't let them, I don't want them here. You know, we had, we had scare last week in one of our staff members. There's people that you may not know that have already been tested. You just, it's a hippos thing, you don't know that that's going off and you want it or not. So I just, uh, with this all in me too, when I go home, I go home. I've been to the store twice since all this started. So I'm taking precautions. I don't know, I'm not a doctor, I don't know how bad this is. I go to the dog park and then they say it can be carried by dogs or cats. You know, I, I, I research as best I can, but I don't know what's true and what's not. So, you know, all I'm here for today is if you keep the building closed, I think that's the wisest thing to do. I don't know what's gonna happen on May fourth, what the governor's gonna do, nobody knows. I think you, the point well taken. My friends, my family, people I know that have a small business, this cannot block forever and I'm all for that. I, I come to work because it's, you know, somebody has to be here. And the people that are on staff, I told them, if you're not comfortable and you can take benefit of time, don't come in. We'll work around that. But it's a, it's a personal decision, I wanna keep it that way. But the decision not to expose them to people that really, that is, they wanna come down to get out of house. They wanna go to the store, they wanna go Lowe's, and they wanna come courthouse. They don't wanna talk to the assessor, you know, this time of year. So, but I think if we, if we give them options, they'll take it, accept it. You know, I'm not done. Thanks.
I just wanna let you know that they did post the executive order and I think there are some changes in here otherwise, but, um, the important thing to you is, um, it's, the stay at home order has been extended until eleven fifty-nine PM on Friday, May first. That's the governor's order. And I can see there's some attacks here. I think it's gonna be more such a change. I'm not sure what's even referred to with regard to.
Yeah, I heard that you're moving forward, that kind of. There, there are services that are gonna be, gonna be started back up. I think, you know, we've kind of gotten to a point here, I think we just need to decide what we wanna do as a commissioner and go from there. I think at this point in time. Personally, I probably agree more with Ron than, than I wanna admit. But I do agree with what he's saying in a lot of ways. Secondly, I have to listen. My point of view, I have to listen to the elected officials and the people responsible for their employees in this building at this point in time. And that's why I think I would be more in favor of going with midnight on May first, which means we would open back up on eight o'clock on May fourth, right at this time. And that would give us time to get the place glass that I kinda promised that I would do my best to get. And I still gotta go back to that, but I don't want people to think I'm doing it because I disagree with Commissioner West because a lot of what he says is very, very true and I agree with. So, but I also think that we are taking the opinions of the people that are here talking to us about their employees at that point in time. That's kinda where I'm at.
I agree with the shields, I mean, that, I don't have a problem with waiting to get those restored. We got them ordered anyway, we might as well utilize them.
Well, again, I, it wasn't just for this, it's for anything, you know.
I hope you get them in the shipping, shipping's not working real well right now.
I know it's not and, and we're, we're, we'll keep pestering. That's all we can do at this point in time. But anyway, I, I would like to at least give that an opportunity. So I think standing at that, I would hopefully would have them by then. That's kinda where I'm at. Last motion.
I'll make a motion to keep the buildings closed till May first at eleven fifty-nine.
Reopen on Monday, May fourth at eight AM.
Reopen.
Much of it beat by default.
Right, this is one to make a carry.
I don't think that's gonna be here, just at one o'clock.
I'm second that, in order to get to the election last term.
Motion second, uh, as presented in any further discussion. Hearing that, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, post, motion carries. Thank you for, uh, elected officials for that common sense approach. I appreciate that, thank you for your care and concern. Uh, discussion, remote access, working from home. Right, list has changed, remote access, working from home. Right now, currently, the, the way we have left it is, is that, that's a discretion of the elected official is in department heads as long as the, the access computer is a county-owned computer and not a personal computer. So maybe a little discussion on whether we wanna allow any, any further access from like a personal computer from their home or do we wanna keep it with county-owned computers? And then on that, also on that, maybe putting an end date of that remote access to the server once we get through this position that we're in because you're gonna have people that wanna, that wanna stay home and work and I really feel like they, they need to be monitored. Their employees. This, that's out there for discussion.
I mean, can we hear something from Scott on our network specialist?
And, and, you know, and that's good and Scott's already, I've had an email from Scott saying that we have preventative things in there, but I still say you gotta be careful letting people with personal computers get on our system.
Scott Henry, IT Network Specialist for the county. Yes, I did send an email, it's all three ago, really quickly you got that. Yes, um, and I addressed several things in that email about the security issues. When it comes to personal devices, there is additional risk, of course. But because of the way a VPN tunnel works, I won't get too technical here, but it is a separate tunnel, the traffic goes through that alone to our county systems. The personal side is separate from that on the computer. There's really no way for viruses or anything like that to jump over to the tunnel unless we make that available. It can be done, but we have not done that. So, um, it is purposely set up with safeguards so that that cannot happen. Uh, I'm not gonna sit here and tell you that we can't be hacked. I mean, that would be stupid. In fact, today, uh, Metronet was attacked.
That's.
We've had some, we've had some issues with our internet service because Metronet was attacked and many large companies get attacked. So this is a matter of mitigation of risk, it's not completely eliminating it. I would say the vast majority of our users are using county-owned equipment and not user equipment. There are a handful, uh, but as I say, in those cases, um, I did not see much additional risk there because of the safeguards. Currently, we have about thirty-five people getting, uh, remoting in every single day to do work. We have had people remoting into the county for, well, ever since I was here, so ten years at least. Uh, to my knowledge, we've never had a problem. So, uh, I do think it's safe. I do think at this time, uh, to increase that capability is, is wise to help these departments get things done. I do monitor and so I, I do feel comfortable recommending that, that we could have users using their own equipment. You know, the opposite to that or the other side of that is we buy laptops for everybody, which I don't think's really feasible, but, uh, so I'm comfortable with it as, as an IT and network person with the safeguards we have at work.
Thanks, sir. Chris, are you in agreement?
Yes.
I knew you worked, but I already had a conversation with you. And again, my, my issue, it has always been security because that's what I'm about and it always will be. But, uh, the other side of that is too, is, is again, as we change the way we do business, we're gonna get more and more requests for people to work from home. And again, I don't like the fact that that's not monitored by the people that oversee that and there's no way to monitor it. I don't care what anybody says. And I don't care what anybody says about this. I, I've had to work from home, I understand how that is. And there's no way in the world I can get done from home what I can get done in my office when I don't have interruptions and other things on my mind besides being at my workplace at work. So you're not gonna be as productive from home. And that's just the way it is. If, if we understand that, then we also have to understand taxpayers are paying these wages and they expect us to have some accountability and oversight of that. And I think if we're not doing that, then, then we're wrong with the taxpayers. So I still say we have to be careful with how many people we have working from home in that department.
Yeah, I'm just curious, how do you monitor that?
Can.
Pretty much all the people that are working remotely are, are certified level three appraisers and they have their own license, they're responsible for their own records. And I have not seen any change. If, if I, if I did, I would've talked to them about it, but I'm in, I have the luxury of my staff. Uh, I started ten years ago as the assessor and they're, they're all ten-year employees. So I've known them and some of them I know longer than that. So, uh, there is an element of trust. We're at the mercy of IT, IT's under you guys. So you'll, you'll be making the decisions in that regard. But I understand what you're saying. And I, I, I'm, I'm, I have luxury of being seven blocks from work. So I prefer to come down here, I prefer to come down here on Saturdays. I like the luxury of no noises here. But other people, you know, that have to deal with the public in my office, they have a home office and they don't have any interruptions at home. So it's, it's, most of my production is, is progress, or I'm sorry. Most of the things we do is project driven, so we're going from point A to point C. That, that's my method.
But then a lot of departments aren't that way.
Right.
And, you know, this is where that goes. And, and just like, now I have to have continuing education for licenses I hold for my business. And of course, those are going online because I can't go to school, uh, like with the hundred and fifty people in the room that we're in. So I have to have set up in my home a way for him to be able to see me so he knows I'm sitting in front of that computer for that twelve hours and I've gotta sit there to make sure I'm there because he's not gonna trust that I'm gonna be there the whole time when he can't see me. And again, I understand that philosophy, I'm required those hours, he's gonna make sure I get those hours because he's being paid to make sure I get my hours for my license. And I think we need to have that same count, accountability to our employees. We need to know and be able to monitor what they're doing, just like he is because he's responsible for that. And that is for my license. So if it's that important to him that he sees me and that I'm doing that for his certification, then it should be the same for us as employers of taxpayer money.
Panbrook, Johnson County Auditor. I have one employee, which is Amy Thompson, that's called VPN or it's called in to the county with, with a laptop. From what I understand, and I'm, I'm not an IT person, but from what I understand, if you can VPN to the county system, you can also clock in. So I know Amy does not VPN, or when she does, she instantly goes to the time system and she clocks in. Therefore, the amount of work that is performed during that time that she's clocked in, she's clocked out, there is some accountability there.
Somewhat.
Somewhat, yes.
And on what that production rate is. And clocking in doesn't necessarily mean you're sitting in front of the computer doing your job.
But in our particular situation, all we're doing is running reports. So you'll be able to see what's being done, I can't speak to the other offices. But I know a lot of people that work from home and I, I don't know this for, for fact. But if they don't clock in, then that's just another avenue to think of moving forward. I don't know if it'd help or not.
The problem is if you're running out right there and, and your computer's on, now, I'm trying to figure out a way for my continuing education to have a blowout doll that looks like that I can place in front of the computer. So, so I don't have to sit there for twelve hours because I don't like sitting there anyway regardless of where I'm at. But anyway, I'm just, we're humans, we're human beings. That's our nature, is to do things like that. Just, not that I don't trust anybody, it's, that's not it. I'm just.
Hey Scott.
I have employees, I understand.
If there becomes a need for this, I mean, I don't know if there's any immediate need, I think we've got the thirty-five we talked about right now. But I mean, if there becomes an immediate need, what timeframe are we looking at to get someone set up to come on our system with personal laptop?
There's a few things that have to be done to the computer at work and then there's a few things that have to be done to the laptop, the remote access. So we're talking probably, oh, forty-five minutes per machine.
Per machine?
Yep.
Okay. I mean, I, I mean, if there's any elected officials out there that see that as a game changer, I mean, I, I think we could take some input on that, but I mean, right now, I don't really hear too much of that. Uh, just wanna be prepared if we do need to do something. Something I'm looking at. I would, I mean, I would leave it as it is right now until we get some more feedback from, from any of the election officials or department heads to come in and just say, hey, this.
Right now, I don't think there is a.
I don't think there's a need, I just wanna be prepared.
And we can do that on a case-by-case basis.
You know, we've had the building shut down before with floods and everything else.
I have three outstanding requests right now, uh, from this side of the street. But as far as I know, those are all county-owned equipment.
Well, and that, yeah, and Chris, I already, I know I already had that discussion with Chris on that. So that was, that was resolved.
Okay, good.
Sorry, I didn't hear that, heard that. Anyway, those were laptops that were county, county equipment, so those fell under the, the. I mean, I think right now, we're currently, we're.
I think we're okay currently, I just wanna make sure that there's, that if something changes, somebody needs immediate access, we can, what timeframe we're looking at, not three, four days, you know, you can do it in an hour, so.
We just, yeah, we would need to be contacted so we can get that going.
I'm sure you'll have a log of who's.
Basically that, we have no motion or anything, we need on that, it continues as is, so.
Yeah, we're just.
Okay.
Talk about that.
Number three, discussion letter of intent, partnership on water treatment with Morgan County.
Well, we got the, and I'm sure you saw or read the letter of intent. Pretty loosely written, but that was probably the best way to handle it anyway. What they're needing, Morgan County's needing from us is a commitment that we're willing to move forward and a partnership arrangement on the wastewater treatment facility. Pretty much under the premise that we discussed before where we would share equally in the cost of construction and the initial purchase of the land. And then any extension of service would be the responsibility of the government that's, that's the recipient of that service. In other words, once the plant's up and running, if we wanna run service up in the Wider Township, we would pay to extend that service. And then the fees that come off of it, the first segment of fees would go to pay for the treatment of the waste, in other words, operation of the plant. Second part of that money would go to reduce our capital investment in that expenditure. And then the third, whatever nets left, would be divided equally among the two entities. So that's kind of in a nutshell how we approached it. One of my concerns all along was that we had equal say in the operation and the management of it. What they're proposing, it would be like a nine-member board, where they would have four people, we would have four, and then we would have one individual who is... An individual who's familiar with the industry, and that would sit on there and have a vote also to help in breaking ties, I guess is a better way to explain it. There's a sense of urgency here because if we're going to partner with them on this, and I think it's vitally needed to provide service up in the Wider River Township, especially with the advent of I-69, we need to start thinking about getting a line underneath Highway 37 before that I-69 construction starts. And once that starts, it would be more difficult and a lot more expensive to try to do that. So they have a March or an April, I forgot the date, 27th, I think is the date that they were looking for in the answer back from us.
It was the 10th.
It was what?
The letter said the 10th.
Oh, she did a revise, maybe...
I don't have a copy of the revised.
Okay. They, now it's a 24th. They need it by the 24th. That's what it was.
I thought that was for the...
Yeah, they need a decision on our part by the 24th, and that's... They need on the 25th, I guess. That's where we're at. I think it's a worthwhile project. It's not a huge, huge project from a capital expenditure, but it's sure going to be a need going forward beyond just the immediate benefits of it of being able to provide service to those areas that I just described. It does a couple of things. One, it doesn't tie the development along I-69 to Greenwood's ability to provide service. Secondly, it gives us an opportunity to run service to a number of subdivisions in that unincorporated area that are currently on septic. And then the third thing, of course, it would give the county a utility going forward that would be a source of revenue once the capital's...
Have you talked to Bargislav on this? Are they extending out there?
Well, originally, we tried to get Bargislav to be a part of it. It was going to be a three-way program, and then they opted out. And we're going to do what I thought was the reason that they opted out. But here's a good example. My dude's got the 200-plus acre development he wants to do there on that southeast corner of 144 and 37. Bargislav's making him spend a million, a million and a half dollars to run sewer service out there today. But this plant, the availability of it, he could connect over here. Now, they would have to get permission. I even talked to Bargislav about it. I said, in this case, let him save that money. Let it connect. We'll give you a percentage of the fee that we charge in conjunction with it as a way to sweeten the pot a little bit for him. But they just, they didn't want to talk about it in any form or fashion, so...
Are they extending services over there, though? That's, I guess, that's my question.
Yeah, they're going to. They're in the process of...
So we're going to have two utilities at the same location?
Not at the same location, because they're on the southeast side there. But we'd be able to provide service to that area now where the Shell Station is, the BP, the Nipple Sandwich. Those businesses in there, we'd be able to provide service to them. They're all on septic.
What's the initial investment in this? I mean, do you have an overall...
The numbers that was bandied around in the beginning was like $6 million for the total to get the plant built and the land and everything.
Seems low, but I'm not a wastewater treatment designer, so...
Well, when I say $6 million, let me back up one. That might... Actually, I think their number was lower than that. That $6 million number that I just referenced was if we were on service to those five subdivisions up in the immediate area that are on septic. United Consulting did an analysis for us and researched all of that. It would be about $6 million expenditure to run service to all those ones. I think the plant, the plant was less than, maybe it was around four now that I think about it. But I haven't seen any worded-in numbers or anything, so I don't know.
Does Morgan County get a current groundwater system?
Yeah, what?
Do they have a current, anywhere else in Morgan County, do they have a current wastewater treatment plant?
Yeah.
Morgan County does?
I think so.
Morganville probably does, I imagine. I don't know if Morgan, the county of Morgan, or not.
Mooresville, I think. I don't, I think, I've been talking mostly to Daniel Elliott, but I did meet with Kenny at one time. And they have a, they have a division in their government that operates a couple of these facilities. At least one, I'm sure, in Mooresville area.
The county does? I didn't realize there was any counties that have wastewater treatment.
And they're doing it through their RDC, and that's what we probably do it through is our RDC also, some kind of arrangement like that. I don't know. Never got into that yet.
I don't know if the commissioners have the proper signatory for the letter of...
What?
I don't know if the commissioners have the proper signatory for the letter if the RDC's involved.
I don't know either. I'm just basically putting it out there. That's what we need to figure out exactly how we want to do it. The commissioners are going to have to make a decision, I guess, even if we went to RDC to do that, we'd have to probably make that decision.
Can I make a suggestion that maybe we could consider? I think there needs to be more involved to this than just us three sitting here talking today to sign a letter of, I guess, intent of anything. Can we possibly get you involved in a meeting, the commissioners, a virtual meeting, and maybe even the engineer? Or whoever that was, you said, USI?
United.
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 So we could have, just do it quickly, but have further discussion so we can, we can maybe talk to them a little bit too, because I haven't heard anything, you know, as far as details.
And I think United Consulting handled one of the engineering foreword campaigns. They're up to speed on it.
I know. I didn't know their name, but I know it was, I'm going to say his name here in a minute. Steve Joe. Thank you.
Well, Keith, I think that's his last name, but he's the one of it.
Is that something you could possibly make happen?
You have a meeting on Monday at 10 o'clock, so your contact information for somebody at United Consulting put it on your agenda and have them remote in or...
No, I think I'd like to have some discussion with the other three commissioners, too.
Okay. So you want to try to call a joint special meeting?
Or, yeah, virtual, maybe, if we could, so we don't have to try to meet. If there's any way we could maybe do that, I'm good with it.
Sure, I'm good.
Then that way, we're all on the same page, I guess.
I don't know how strictly they're going to adhere to that 24th. Close the business on the 24th.
I think the 24th is your deadline for that.
Well, and I think, you know, if they know we're talking to them, they know we're interested in talking to them.
The 24th, if they...
Yes.
I would think that, I think especially now, they should have a little extra time, to be honest with you. But I would like to talk to them personally and know a little bit more, honestly. Are you okay with that? We may do that as quick as we can.
Yeah, I think all we're, what they're wanting is just a letter of intent. Yeah, if we'd like to go ahead and proceed with kind of a formal arrangement together, we're not hiding ourselves from anything as far as I go.
I think if we make contact with them and they know we want to do this, I would think that would let them know we're interested or we wouldn't be talking to them that often. That's what I'm kind of doing. I haven't talked to any of the commissioners under at all about that part of it, which we may make those arrangements. We're just here for discussion anyway on this today.
Isn't that important?
Thank you. I think that would be a good way to resolve the issue. Kind of like wrote grant application letter of support. Again, I've seen that, but I don't understand a whole lot about it.
Well, Dan Parker, I... Talked to Dan.
Who's Dan?
He's the head of DPW Department of Public Works in Marion County or City of Indianapolis. He has over there Department of Public Works. Basically, they've applied for a grant, I guess is a better term, but funding on widening Marion County or County Line Road, four lanes from Greenwood City Limits over to I-69. First phase would be from I-69 to Morgan Town Road. But they're trying to get the money in order to do this four-lane expansion, and they kind of committed to 2025 deadline on trying to get this done. What they wanted from us, and Barb sent an email out for me to some of the people that I thought would be interested parties in this, Mayor Greenwood, Chris Ham with HWC, and Luke out there, I think. I think there was like eight people we sent it to. And what they were wanting from us was some idea of how we would support their grant application inasmuch as demonstrating some of the economic advantages that would be incurred with the expansion of it. Well, there's not a lot of economic expansion that could be done. Maybe right there in Peterman or Royal Road or something like, but not a lot. Mostly, it's going to just enhance the current residential area. The economic advantage, of course, would be like four-laning and expediting traffic across the county and into the Greenwood area there. So they were looking for something there. And the other thing was they were curious as to whether we would be willing to help them and work with them in certain areas of land acquisition and that on the Johnson County side. And I said, yeah, there'd be no reason for us not to help you in any way we could. And they're not talking about financial help. They're just talking about helping them with the process we could help them with. So they're just needing something from us that they can take to whoever's supplying the money. I guess it'd be the feds. I don't know.
It's a build grant. It used to be called Tiger. It used to be called the Tiger Grant, but now they've changed it over to a build grant, so...
Through the MBO, I think, is where it's going.
This goes straight to the federal, and you've got to have the end dot support on it. We're researching it for the I-69.
But I think it's imperative that we give them whatever support we can give them in that conjunction to get that County Line four lane.
So this would be a support in spirit, not in money?
Yeah, they're not asking for any financial assistance. The only asking is ideas, aesthetics. Now, there could be, if we get involved in financial application to this project, it might be something where we sidewalk in along our side or something of that nature. But the rest of it, it's all funded by them.
Luke, you might come forward again. I have a couple of questions. Because I assume when we're talking, go ahead.
Luke Maston, highway director.
I assume when we're talking right-of-way acquisition, that involves you as the highway department. Is that correct?
It does. A few years ago, when Marion County and City of Indianapolis looked to improve the intersection of Morgan Town Road and County Line Road, we did enter into an interlocal agreement with the city. They essentially, they led the lead, or they were the lead on the project. They funded the project. The interlocal was really geared more towards if they needed technical assistance or information from us, that we provided it. It also gave them the ability to pursue, if necessary, eminent domain to acquire right-of-way within Johnson County. Having those border roads makes that a little complicated, and that's why it's not uncommon to see interlocal agreements cover that. So I would, based on what Commissioner West has described, I would say it's probably somewhat similar to the interlocal agreement terms for right-of-way acquisition that we had with them on that.
Is that something you'd be familiar with enough to provide that letter that we can maybe look at? And here's the point I want to get to here, is I know they're not saying that there's any monetary to that, but time is monetary. So what time we spend acquiring those acquisitions or whatever that is, and the time we spend involved in that is money we're spending. It's just not money that we're going to be showing through a bill or anything, I guess. So we're still going to spend money getting involved in this.
We could. It would ultimately depend on what the terms of that interlocal are. So for any acquisition that was needed for that intersection improvement at Morgan Town and County Line, the city actually handled that. Essentially, our interlocal allowed them somewhat on our behalf, but it gave them the ability to purchase that right-of-way within Johnson County, and if needed, buy all eminent domain.
Would that suffice, then, that...
Yeah, that's exactly what you're saying, yeah.
Is that something that you'd be willing to work on and look at?
Yeah.
Because I mean, I don't have a problem giving them the letters.
No.
To do an improvement if it then costs us a bunch.
Yeah, I mean, I'm all in supportive in spirit, not in financials. We've just got a huge freight train coming at us with the I-69. It's our own infrastructure projects. I just don't want to be committing money to a Marion County project without taking care of our main infrastructure, either Smith Valley or 144 or Morgan Town or Molinax. I mean, we've got a lot, a long list and very costly list of projects we're looking at there.
And again, there's going to be some cost to it because man-hours, man-time in that, helping in that situation, but it's not going to be drastic amount of cost.
That's correct.
That's what I wanted to make sure I understood, so...
I could draft a support letter demonstrating that we are interested in Marion County presenting that project. It does provide benefit to the county. It doesn't necessarily negate any of the other work we're going to have to do, but County Line Road does need to be improved, so I would have to put something together. There was some discussion about a deadline or when they needed it by.
Yeah, they needed it. Was it the 24th on that one? Yeah, they need something before the 24th of this month.
Can you, I'll draft something. They're going to basically be repeating one you've already kind of been into, I think.
Yeah.
If you're going to do that, sir, would be great, and then get it to you, and if it does, we can do that. So that means we have to have it to them by the 24th.
They wanted it by the 24th in our possession. Yes.
It says, can you provide a letter in support of this project by April 24th?
Most likely, they don't need the original, that I think the applications are submitted online to the build grant process anyway. So that should not be a problem.
Just have some, make contact with somebody and just make sure we're okay to get it to them. At least get it out.
I'm sure.
Okay.
We have to have it.
Dan Parker, I guess.
We can scan an email of that now.
I can reach out to Dan and make sure we're good.
Thank you, sir. Can you do anything with sentry links since you hit my line at my house?
It wasn't marked.
I saw a lot of markings there.
But not those two.
My wife's got a Zoom thing she's got to do tomorrow at 5:00 and 10:00 at the center, and I can get there.
Well, I apologize for that, but we did call and locate. We waited the appropriate time, and neither of the two lines that were hit were marked well.
Okay. I might say you need to help me there. Sorry.
Have you seen those wires on each end?
It's going to be ugly. You haven't received that phone call from my wife yet. When you do, you'll know it's her. Trust me, because we're not your father.
That's why she hasn't called you.
Yeah. She'll get ahold of me, trust me. No problem, sir. Thank you.
Will you go ahead and make a formal motion that you want to write a letter in support of this project? for this project?
I, I would make a motion that we give County of Marion County a support letter in spirit or whatever, and assistants have Luke pull together an interlocal agreement with them by the 23rd of April.
Thought we were just doing the letter by the.
Just doing the letter.
Just doing the letter. Now, by the, then we can email by the 24th.
Yes.
And you're going to, you're going to make those arrangements, so you'll, you'll let us know. I have a motion and a second. Any further? Hang on, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post, pushing carries. That's the end of my list.
I got one thing I want to bring up here real quick.
Is it going to be long? We, we got everybody on overtime.
Well, Mike Frutt does a good job of sending us an update about every other day on the COVID-19 deaths and cases here in the county. And the, the last one I got, it, it mentioned in there that the coroner had tested two hospice people post-mortem for COVID-19. So I got ahold of Mike Frutt, and I said, Mike, could you find out how the cause of death was listed on the death certificate? And so he had Greg Lutz call me, and, and I asked Greg about it, and he said, well, I'll send you. He said, we got guidance, this is a six-page COVID-19 guidance for coroners on how they should handle suspected virus cases, and, and then how to fill out the death certificate. And so I, I had noticed on, on here, they've got a sample, and the sample that the state recommends, it says, the first line, due to the consequence of, and it's on this example, it's acute respiratory distress syndrome, and then B, due to or as a consequence of pneumonia, and then C, due to or a consequence of COVID-19. And then their recommendation under this example, COVID-19 would be considered an underlying cause, not the cause of death. So I said to Craig, I said, well, how did, how did, how did the Department of Health list these? And he said, well, they list them, and both of them as COVID-19 deaths. And so I said, well, that's kind of anti what the state's recommended here, and, and the state even goes to, they, they have a paragraph on underlying cause. So I got ahold of Betsy at the Health Department, and she said, yeah, Greg said that, that's not right, that's the way we listed it. I had also called Dr. Dunkle out of JMH a week ago and asked him a similar question before I ever got this information here. I said, how do you handle the death certificate? Oh, well, I said, you know, if it's coronary, we list that and then whatever, and, and I said, then if it's COVID-19, then, yeah, he said, that's but then, but he said the cause of death would be the heart attack or whatever it may have been. And, and I, and I said, you know, it's one thing to say somebody died with, another thing to say they died of. And so where I'm going with this is now I've found out that there's been more than just these two, there's been other post-mortem examinations, but I'm just curious as to how many deaths in our county that we're recording through the Health Department that are truly COVID-19 deaths. Someone, in, in these two hospice cases, I, I got to believe that in both of those cases, these people had, the reason around hospice was because they were about to die, and the fact that they contracted the virus would not mean that the virus killed them, that they died thereof. And the only reason I bring this out is I, I'm always, I've been complaining about this thing from day one, you guys heard all my complaints. But surely to God, we ought to be the county that reports accurately these deaths and not inflating the numbers. And the only reason I would think that any entity would inflate the numbers would be to bring more prominence to what they're doing. Maybe at some point down the road, some, some government agencies around the country would try to use those numbers to get more financial assistance. I don't know. I, I don't know any other reason that you would do that. So I, I'm hoping Betsy's listening, but I would really like to know exactly how many of these COVID-19 deaths that we've reported in the county, I think it's 33 or something like that, that they were really deaths that occurred by the virus and not by the virus being an underlying cause.
I'm not going to debate that in public with you, because I'm sure there's a lot of families out there that are hurting because their lives were shortened, some of their loved ones. So I, I'm not going to debate that in public with you, but you've got to listen to the medical professionals. You know, if they cut their lives short, it, it did. I, you know, I feel sorry for those families. I, I'm not going to debate that in public about the personal lives or what cause of death. If COVID was part of that, I feel sorry for them because it got into that facility. It's, it's a bad case. I know you've talked to Betsy, I know you've talked to Cora, all those people have been in there, it's a bad situation, and they're doing what they can to protect those people to sustain their lives. So that's all I'm going to say on that.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not talking about the survivors. Obviously, anybody that loses a loved one, that's, that's a dark situation. I am not questioning that. What I'm questioning is the veracity of our, of the government to spend the numbers out. I still contend that a lot of what we're faced with with this COVID lockdown or shutdown is based on numbers that make people fearful of the virus, more so than what they, what they would be if they had the real numbers. Because of what they're saying is, you know, that, well, the percentage of people tested is, is this, and the percentage of deaths is that, and then the numbers are way too high, and we need to get it down. Well, if you're inflating the numbers purposely, then I, I'd like to know why.
I guess you'd have to be a health professional.
Yes, that's, that's kind of who I'm addressing this to.
Why are you looking at me? I'm not a health professional.
You just happened to be in my view.
You were looking at him, so he was looking at you.
Can we call for a chairman?
We can't. Before we do that, I would like to take a moment to thank all the employees that have dedicated themselves to being here to serve the public for the courage and for their dedication to the public to be here and to serve those people, so. And that includes a lot of employees, and I just want to make sure I, I thank those people, because I know I'm here, and I know Barb's here, and I know our treasurer's here, our auditor's here, assessor's here, we got a lot of people here, our directors are here putting in the time and doing the work, and they're doing it every day, you know. I just want to make that special thank you to those people, and that's all I have.
Betsy says she'll respond if you'd like.
I didn't hear that.
Betsy said she would respond.
Okay.
Can you guys hear me again?
Thank you, Betsy.
Sorry about that. No, I just wanted to make a brief comment about inflating, that in no way, shape, or form is our intention. Those are listed as extended, as its contributing factors. You can put more than one cause of death on a death certificate. We are following guidance that's been set out, and we want to accurately depict this because we need to know accurate numbers of exactly how many people have contracted them. And yes, some of these people are in hospice, but they've been in hospice for quite some time, and then after contracting COVID, they passed away. So it is very indicative of making sure we manage the numbers the way that we need to, so that we accurately represent what's help, what's happening in our county.
Thank you, Betsy.
Right, and I won't keep you any longer, I know it's getting late.
I don't know if Commissioner West heard all that, but I did.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Betsy.
Okay. For a turn, but.
Motion second, we're done. Thank you very much.
Thank you.